The regular notice of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act has been complied with in adequate advance notice if this meeting was given at least forty-eight hours in advance. Notice was mailed to the Courier Post and the Aldea. Notice was also posted on the bulletin board located by the reception desk at the central office and all school building bulletin boards within the district. Roll call, please.
Teresa Atwood, Catherine Blackshear, Jose Brito Bueno, Dorothy Burley, Taysha Manir, Maseem Muhammad.
Present.
Alicia Reyes Morton, Martha Wilson.
Present.
Even though we don't have a quorum because this is a meeting organized by the superintendent under 7A of the State Intervention Statute, we can still proceed, so we'll proceed with flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, in which there is liberty and justice for all.
So normally, we start off the meeting with closed session, but today, we're going to do closed session at the end of the meeting, so we're going to go forward with the meeting
So I'm going to come down and give the regular superintendent's presentation. All right, good evening, everyone. So just want to begin by recognizing our graduates. This represents our valedictorians and salutatorians at each of our five high schools. I know a number of our board members joined all five graduation ceremonies, which are, of course, bittersweet. There was a number of student speakers, of course, and a lot of history that was discussed, particularly Camden High School, which was the last graduation in the current facility before the reconstruction process begins. We said goodbye to Principal Keith Miles, Ed Woodrow Wilson, who, after three years, is taking off. We'll give you an update on new principal placements a little bit later. It was a beautiful day, and it was our pleasure as staff and board members to congratulate all of those graduating seniors. And so while we're staying on, while we're talking about our students, we also wanted to recognize and honor our student board representatives, who have been huge parts of our regular conversations with our staff, with airmark and community members, and really just the day-to-day operations of our schools. So Rashim Iban, Siani, Kyla, Tiana, Esmeralda, Josh, and Manifa, want to recognize and thank them. A few, a number of them will be coming back next year, assuming they get re-elected in their positions within their respective schools, and then a handful of them are graduating seniors, like Josh, of course. All right, I want to give a few updates on Camden High School and the reconstruction and events that are happening or have happened in and around the Parkside community. So following the last day of school at Camden High, the community held, or I should say there were three community events held for alumni and Parkside residents. So there was an alumni picnic, a Camden Sophisticated Sisters showcase, and a summer jam. I know a number of our staff members attended those events. Separately, I wanted to let you all know that on June the 30th, at 10:00 AM, the New Jersey Schools Development Authority will host an information session for Camden contractors at HB Wilson Media Center. So again, that is Friday, June the 30th, at HB Wilson, from 10:00 AM to noon. The New Jersey Schools Development Authority will hold this information session for any Camden contractors interested in various contracts involved in the reconstruction process. And so local businesses can learn more about how to get involved in all SDA projects, but specifically this one, and how to become a pre-qualified contractor and various other opportunities with SDA. On June the 23rd, there was an SDA meeting held, which was effectively a mandatory pre-bid conference for contractors interested on bidding on the project. And so just wanted to let you all know about that. And then lastly, the plans to relocate Camden High School into temporary space in Hatch have already begun. So I just want to thank our staff. I know Jay Wa and Anna and so many others, certainly on our facilities team as well, have been working tirelessly to get these plans underway. They're very, very, very detailed and complex when you think about all the moving parts. One example being are many of our fall sports preparation has already begun, so football, for instance. And access to the weight room is a huge concern, and we, it looks like we were able to best situate the weight room at the rig center so that those athletes who are preparing for this upcoming football season can have access to the resources they need. Again, that's just one example, and there are many other moving parts, and I want to thank our staff. All right, so let me jump in and very quickly highlight some changes to school leader, principal placements for next year. The headline is, for the most part, there is continuity across all of our school buildings. There are a handful of changes that I want to speak to very briefly, just so you're aware. So the first is Dr. Jonathan Ogbonna will move from his current position in supporting Camelot and Goodwill to Cooper's Point. And given Dr. Ogbonna's... You're all right? Go ahead. Let me just pause for a moment as our, as our guest gets seated. So just to quickly back up again, I just wanted to quickly highlight some of the changes in principal placements for next year. So the first change, and there are only a handful here, Dr. Jonathan Ogbonna will move from his current position, supporting Goodwill and Camelot, to Cooper's Point School. And Cooper's Point, for those of you familiar with, with the school, given, given its relatively large student, excuse me, special education population, we felt that Dr. Ogbonna's deep knowledge and experience in working with special education would be, would be a terrific fit at Cooper's Point. Secondly, Mr. Herb Simons will move to the Cream School, where he was actually the school leader there before, and so he's very familiar with the school and the community, and we believe he'll be a tremendous asset to the Cream School community. Ms. Nicole Harrigan Nash will move from, will move to be the school leader at HB Wilson. So HB Wilson, one of our largest schools. Ms. Nash, we believe, is someone who is a, a rising leader here, who has been a lead educator, who's been a school leader at Sumner School, and will be a great fit over there with the HB Wilson School community. And we, and let me actually close by sharing Woodrow Wilson. So with Woodrow Wilson, given this is the largest school in the school district with very active community support, and certainly some concerns that have come up in our board meetings and other settings about what are we doing to support our bilingual students or special education students, really all students at Woodrow Wilson, we, in the case of Woodrow Wilson, have gone to great lengths to engage the community with various students and parents and community leaders to really find the right fit there. And so the short of it is that we have, we brought in two finalists, and we believe at this point, we are zeroing in on one finalist, on one lead candidate. And this individual, again, has met with not just our central office staff, but a great many number of external stakeholders, and again, community leaders, parents, students, et cetera. And so we're gathering all of the feedback we've heard to make a final decision, and over the next few days, we're going to work through the specifics of making that final decision, onboarding, and clearing that individual, and then introducing that individual to the Woodrow Wilson School community. So I did want to just spend a couple extra minutes talking about Woodrow Wilson. All right, Sumner School. We are, we are committed to ensuring we partner with families in the community to determine suitable long-term uses for any vacant facilities. So I've given you all updates in the past about vacant facilities, as various organizations have expressed interest in those vacant facilities, and we just have ongoing conversations with various community members about those vacant facilities. And so with that in mind, this summer, given Sumner School is now vacant, we're planning on meeting with the kind of local neighborhood around Sumner School, namely the Liberty Park Neighborhood Association, to discuss potential long-term uses of the Sumner facility. And so that's, that's the quick update there, and as we get further along in those conversations, we'll continue to keep you up to date. I'm not sure if everyone here is aware, but we won a very large Promise Neighborhood Grant. So this was actually a collaborative effort involving the city, Cooper Hospital, and a number of other nonprofit organizations, namely the Center for Family Services, who I believe was the lead applicant to the federal government for a Promise Neighborhood Grant. And so this was announced, I want to say, a few months ago, three, four months ago. And just want to give you an update as to where we are, because we're partnering right now with all those organizations, part of the application, to support the vision of this Promise Neighborhood. And so the, the target neighborhoods are listed here. There are five in total, Cooper Plaza, Lanning Square, Bergen Square, Centerville, and Liberty Park. And there are three schools in total, Wiggins, Camden High School, and Kip Cooper Norcross Academy. And in total, given that this is a very holistic approach to supporting a neighborhood, fourteen thousand five hundred people will be impacted by this grant, which is, again, a very far-reaching grant, given the way that it addresses neighborhood needs. And so it's really exciting, given, we're obviously talking about a lot of people being impacted. Specifically for our school community, we will have additional funding, approximately 1.1 million dollars, which is tremendous, of course, to be able to hire additional staff with a focus on social-emotional learning supports and college and career readiness. And so we're going to be able to hire two behavioral specialists, two social workers and mental health practitioners, and one college success coordinator, and one college success coach. And so in addition to that, we're going to be developing and implementing summer and after-school programming at Wiggins with the YMCA support. We're building a health clinic at the Wiggins School, and then there will be some additional services and supports which will, which are still in the process of being planned. But look, this is a huge opportunity for, for Wiggins and also Camden High, and just wanted to let you all know, because our team is working on this fairly actively. All right, last update here, and then we'll jump into some district highlights. So Camden Enrollment, so Camden Enrollment is now completing its second year, as I think a lot of you all are aware. And I want to thank our team who has been leading that work, because, you know, launching something this new and this complex entails a lot of hard work. And so to cut to the chase on this update, we have been hearing some concerns along the way about whether the district itself is best positioned to be a quote-unquote neutral entity running the enrollment system, because right now, we operate schools, and we also operate the enrollment system. And we operate that enrollment system on behalf of other schools that we don't operate. So of course, charter schools and Renaissance schools, namely. And so the idea here is, you always want a neutral party operating enrollment. And so the plan right now is to take the work that we've done and to separate it into an independent nonprofit organization that focuses exclusively on operating the enrollment system. And so that is in this month's board report, and so I just wanted to make sure that you all had that context, because we believe that it is important for this effort to be neutral and to be operated by a third party. More details to share as this work moves forward, but we believe that situating the enrollment work independently, independent of the district is ultimately going to lead to improvements for all of our school partners in the city. All right, let me just close out with a few district highlights. These are some pictures from the Remarkable Grad's Celebration. That was on June the 8th. I know a number of you all in the audience were in attendance there. Twenty-two members of the class of 2017 received college scholarships and accolades for the Fourth Annual Remarkable Graduates Event. And the students got to hear from two Camden alumni, two, from the class of 2012 at Brim, was graduate Jamil Miller, who is currently training to be a cardiologist. And they also heard from two, the class of 2016 graduate Crystal Ford. She graduated from Camden High. She received a near-perfect GPA in her first year of college at West Virginia State University. So Jamil and Crystal gave words of inspiration to those 22 students. And we want to thank Subaru of America, who was a huge partner for us and, and contributed the scholarships to the students. These are a few pictures from family literacy events across the district. So our school reading interventionists and the Division of Engagement hosted family literacy nights at every district school this spring. The events were, were well-attended by parents who receive free books for their children, as well as tips to encourage kids to do more reading at home. So huge thanks to our reading interventionists and our engagement team. Want to give a shout-out for the 55 students from here, Dudley School, who successfully completed GREAT, which stands for Gang Resistance Education in Training. There was actually a nice story in the paper about this event and about the work of the school staff here and the Camden County Police Department. So GREAT teaches 12- to 14-year-olds about the dangers of joining gangs and equips our students with the social-emotional skills to resist peer pressure and to stay on a positive course. So again, I want to thank Camden County Police Department and, and the staff here for, for that effort. Think Through Math. So Think Through Math is a partner of ours in our math curriculum, and the district recently surprised with a number of our teachers and school staff, two students who basically scored on a national level with the Think Through Math program. And so these are, these are the pictures here. Julio Lenes, 7th grader at Cato School, for being the district's most improved Think Through Math scholar. Asaya David, who's a 7th grade student at Wiggins, for being recognized for producing one of the best math journals in the country by Think Through Math. And then there was also Ms. Carolyn Dumbalas, a Cooper's Point Middle School student, I'm sorry, a Cooper's Point Middle School math teacher, whose classes demonstrated the most progress in Think Through Math this school year. So just wanted to share that out with you all. And then we'll close by, I'm sorry, there's one more slide. Want to recognize Lanami Moore. I think those of you who come to our board meetings regularly, you hear her name fairly often. So Lanami closed out the track season by winning the meet of champions. So she was first the state champion in Group Two, and then the, the meet of champions involves the winners of each of those groups within the state, including the private school division, and she placed first in the state. If I remember correctly, her track coach, Coach Miller, excuse me, Coach Satterfield, told me that she has the 20th fastest time in the country in the 100-meter girls hurdle. So let's give her a round of applause. All right, and then we're going to close with, the leadership at three schools submitted student groups to be considered for the New Jersey State Board Recognition Award. And, and so those three schools were Brim Chowhounds, Dudley School Safety Patrol, and the Woodrow Wilson High School Student Board Reps. And Brim Medical Arts, the Chowhounds were chosen by the New Jersey State Board Recognition Award by, by the group that recognizes that award, I should say. And so they were, they, they won, and so I just wanted to share that with you all, that the State Board of Education has, has recognized them as the winner from Camden County. And we will recognize our retirees up on stage. Thank you all very much.
Just like to recognize individuals who are retiring. Thank you for your service to Camden youth and surrounding, and communities. Deborah Adams, 16 years. Lindsay Arcaini, 17 years. April Gross, seven, 21 years. Michelle Ingram, 26 years. Michelle Urban, 29 years. Senora Kenyon, 26 years. Denise Levine, 18 years. Deborah Martin, 25 years. Albert Muse, 21 years. Anthony Payton, 35 years. Troy Turner, 12 years. Donna Young, 26 years. So again, thank you for devoting your careers and your lives to Camden's youth and families.
So tonight, on behalf of the Board Secretary, we're presenting the bill list and the board agenda items for superintendent approval. There is no board secretary report for this month, but the April report we will present at the July board meeting. Any comments or questions?
Any questions from the board members?
No. I think they thoroughly answered.
Okay. We can now turn it over to superintendent.
Yeah, so in accordance with the powers vested in the state district superintendent under Title 18A, I hereby approve today superintendent's agenda items and business office agenda items. I believe we're now going to move to public comment.
Yes, so we're now going to move to public comment. If you signed up for comment, we reserve three minutes per person. Please direct your comments to the board. A buzzer will go off when your three minutes are up, and after that, I will, you will hear a buzzer go off. We'll ask that you wrap up your comments at that time. First speaker is Stan White, after Mr. White is Kevin Barfield.
Got here late, so I'll address some publicly. One comment the superintendent made in reference to Sumner School, I'm glad I was in the audience. There is more organizations, community groups, parents than the stakeholder that you suggested. That Liberty Parks, all right, I'd be clear, is very well-controlled by, by some local entities. So I just wanted to bring that to the superintendent's concern, and me and him will discuss that. But there's a whole lot of organization and community members in Centerville. And I'm talking about Centerville, where it's not Liberty Park. So I'll leave that alone. Camden High Field, I'm concerned, I had an outside partner just text me today, and I didn't have a chance to get that to the superintendent. Very much want an architectural drawing, or some type of drawing, of a scoreboard at Camden High's field. Can the superintendent direct me to whatever person he wants to try to get that to them? And they will probably, you know, due to architectural drawing, but would that be dire or whatever staff superintendent you would like? Third issue is the upkeep, the maintenance, the security, the abuse of Camden High's field by our community. If we don't address that now, we're going to address that later. And I'm talking about, that field should have a lifetime of X amount of years, not the way it's going now. And school board members, you know, I'm looking at some of your faces, we're just talking about the high heels that the women wear. It has been said in a board policy, don't walk on a turf field with those high heels on, because it digs into the turf. That was allowed at this graduation. Wheelchair accessibility, that's why we need bleachers, so the wheelchair handicap people do not have to be wheeled onto that field. Ours is where there's a ramp going up that they can see everything, football games, anything going on, because it's handicap accessible. Board members, we don't have a place for handicap at that field. Then I see in the Courier Post, I'm going to stick on Camden High's field right now, that Meffert is suing the same contractor, Mr. Tinksley, I mean, I'm sorry, a board lawyer that we had, because of the field is not up to par. Camden High's field doing the same thing, and Meffert is doing a class action suit to regroup the money. I ask could this board look into it, reach out to Deffert, to see if we can be included? Because board members, when that field was made, you actually bounced off of that field. Right now, it is so hard, the gravel's coming up, it, somebody's going to get injured. So they didn't do our field any justice. That's a class action suit that Meffert has filed that made the front page of the Carrier Post, and I sent it to this board or board employees, and didn't even get the courtesy of a phone call back. That concerns me. That could be a million dollars, two millions, just waiting there if we can recoup that money.
Please wrap up your comments, Mr. White.
Excuse me?
Please wrap up your comments.
That's it, because that concerns you. That last one is your area. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Kevin Barfield, and after that is Angel Cordero.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yes, I just wanted to speak on, kind of, just wanting to say thanks to the district staff. Just like you said, the day is a bittersweet for me as a parent, having my oldest son finally graduating. When I look back on that journey of 18 years going through this school district, it's kind of like, I wouldn't wish this on no parent, especially now, you know, because of the changes that have been going on. And again, I'd just like to thank all the staff, especially those who are not here, that played a role in getting not only my son, but a lot of these children through this process, especially with the, the number of changes that have taken place over the many a years in this district. It's amazing that our children do stay focused enough and have the motivation and the drive and the energy to make it from kindergarten, my son was from kindergarten to senior through the school district. And a lot has happened through that time. So publicly, I wanted to thank individuals, we're talking about the maintenance department, we're talking about security, you know, we're talking about the many a staff that has touched and does touch our children. And I would be remiss to superintendent to speak on, when you mentioned about this, Woodrow Wilson High School. It's mighty funny that you talk about some of the things you talk about, because I walked through that school. That's not a reflection on leadership. And my concern right now is that our school, that school, with all the changes that have taken place, that we're going to have some issues next year. When you're talking about staffing, security in that school, it's amazing, as I walk through that school, that you see students in the hallway. Security, lack of security, it had nothing to do with leadership. So I'm not going to go more into details about what I've seen, and not being at none of those other meetings, but nothing's going to change over Woodrow Wilson, as long as you have the demographics there. Because it's more of a culture thing than it is a leadership thing. If you listen to the, whether it's the bachelor or, or the graduation, with the numbers and the statistics of the improvement in college acceptance, test scores, and things of that nature in that school, despite the facts of what was going on, it's amazing that those, that those achievements took place in that school. So, you know, to sit here and seem that, you know, I'm hearing in your, your voice the undertone in reference to your mention in leadership, that's a disservice. So I'm going to leave it like that, and again, thank all those individuals in this district, those who are no longer here, that have definitely played a role in supporting our children throughout these years.
Thank you, Mr. Barfield.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Superintendent, and members of the board. My name is Angel Cordero. I'm a consultant for parents for Great Camden Schools. Mr. Superintendent, I want to introduce a new parent organization that's been formed in Camden under Parents for Great Camden Schools. The president is Maria. The president is Maria, vice president is, I mean, Marika and Maria. They're called Parents United for a Better Camden Schools. Now, just want to let you know, there were many parents, and we're going to get together, and we want change in the city of Camden, we want good schools, no matter what they are, we want good schools. Well, we're here today to support Elizabeth Rodriguez, the FOC of Dudley Middle School. Now, she got a not-so-good evaluation from her manager. I have proof right here that she met all her benchmarks, but her manager gave her a bad evaluation. There were some, some people said that she only caters to Hispanics. You send out 500 letters to a school with 87% Hispanics, and only Hispanics show up? That is not her fault. Now, we're here in support of Elizabeth Rodriguez. She's a good FOC. This local appearance, lift up your hands, all these parents are from this school. Now, they were here before, and still, nothing, like she's going to get laid off. We are here to urge the board to reconsider your decision on supporting this woman who has done a great job, and Aaron Roller has not, his evaluation is wrong. She had texts, she has emails, she had everything to prove that she's a good FOC, and she should stay here. Now, we talk about good education, Superintendent. Good education starts with good people. We have the children, we have the parents, and we need good people like Ms. Rodriguez in this, in schools like Camden. Now, I have complained about all the FOCs, and I haven't been able to even get a meeting with the managers of the FOCs, because that person didn't want to talk to me about the FOC I was talking about. But this one is a great one, and there was two complaints about her, and a bad evaluation that's bad, but she is getting booted. But the one I'm talking about that I know is not a good one, she's being fired. She's not, they're keeping her. So Superintendent, I want you to please reconsider this. Board members, please reconsider Ms. Rodriguez. She's a good person, she caters to everybody. This nonsense that you hear that you only cater to Hispanics is only nonsense in the city of Camden. We're not divided, we're as close together than ever in the city of Camden, Hispanics and African-Americans. Some people just want to separate us.
Please wrap up your comments, Mr. Cordero.
Please reconsider Ms. Rodriguez. And Superintendent, I'll see you next year, right? All right, I got you, I got your back, all right? Thank you.
Next speaker, Sherrell Sharp.
Thank you, Mr. Cordero.
And after Sherrell Sharp is Michaela Pabon.
Our next speaker is Michaela Pabon. Next speaker is Sarah Joslin. And after that is Dr. Keith Benson.
Sarah Joslin, 1234 Forge Road in Cherry Hill. As you know, I've been working on the pop-up library, we have one out in the hall today. We've been doing it also within the city at other locations. I thank the other groups that are on board and doing similar things. At Virtua Hospital yesterday, I was very pleased, there was a young lady there who was from first grade, graduated first grade from Yorkshire, and her proud grandma told me she's reading at a second-grade level, and she was very interested in having a book. So I thank the board and encourage the literacy work that's being done in this district. It's important that it's done at all ages and stages. I went to the State Board of Education meeting this month, and one of the groups that was recognized were young people that were taking an AP class in writing and research. This involved learning how to use the right tools, and then taking a proposal and making a plan to use it. So they'd be, actually have a capstone-type of project which would prepare them for college. I just bring this to the board's attention, it is an AP course that's being offered now, piloted, but keep it on your radar, it may be new for next year. Literacy is important in all things, including environmental education. I know you've heard me talk about this a lot of times. Every citizen needs to be knowledgeable about the environment. Camden is a silver-certified city, and we need to be promoting this beyond a biology class in high school. We need to be promoting it at all levels, and I've seen a great science curriculum on paper, I'm hoping it's being implemented. I'd like to see greater participation and visibility of the partnerships with the groups that are part of the Camden Collaborative Initiative of Educational Educators. So please make that information available to all teachers, so that they have an opportunity to engage suitable classroom resources that are consistent with their curriculum needs. Thank you.
Next speaker, Dr. Keith Benson. After that is Brian Morton.
I would like to address our Hispanic brothers and sisters tonight, and because unfortunately, because there is a language barrier between Black folks and some Spanish speakers, some things get lost in translation, and some things, you know, that are left unsaid, it's very easy for things to sort of disseminate, and, you know, for some mistrust to develop. So if they stayed here, I actually used Google Translate to try and speak to them, and being that they left, I'm going to say it anyway, because maybe they could listen to it if they watch it online or something. So, buenas noches. Primero quiero disculparme que no puedo hablar español muy bien. Soy un chico negro, y mi esposa es Puerto Ricanya, y mi hija es negra y Puerto Ricanya también. Quiero decirles que la gente que los ha reunidos, venido a todos aquí, esta noche lo están haciendo porque son pagados para hablar, bussada sobre nuestras escuelas públicas. Mi nombre es Dr. Keith Benson, y he sido profesor aquí in Camden, in Camden durante trece años, y ahora soy el jefe de nuestro sindicato de personal escolar. Quiero decirles a todos mis hermanos y hermanas latinos aquí, esta noche que nuestras escuelas públicas y el personal y preocupan por usted y por su hijo. Nos importa y tú importa. Importa. And pretty much what I was saying was that a lot of the, well, the group that targets the Latino community here, they're paid to talk trash about our schools. And I want them to know that our schools and our teachers at our schools care about them, and we care about their community, and we care about their children. And when that's not said, it's very easy for folks to sort of come in and exploit that language gap and, you know, create falsehoods or disseminate falsehoods. But back to what I was going to say today is that, Mr. Superintendent, a number 837 stands out to me, because since you arrived in 2013, you have laid off or abolished the positions of 837 people. And these are families, and these folks pay bills, these folks add to the learning experience of young people in our schools. And some of the folks that have been laid off are folks that teach cooking, commercial foods, music, art, and these are all things that can help expand the learning experience for young folks, but these folks have been laid off. I cannot imagine how many tears 837 people have cried because of decisions you and your administration have made over the years. Twenty-six schools have been, were here when you got here, today there's only 19. You're laying off custodians, that doesn't make our schools any cleaner. You're laying off security officers, that doesn't make our schools any safer. You're laying off clerks, doesn't make our offices run any smoother. Ultimately, the people who lose out are our students, and guidance counselors also are being laid off as well. So ultimately, the people who you have been charged to take care of are the people who bear the most brunt of your decisions. And as much as we tell ourselves, yeah, we're doing this stuff for the kids, we're doing this stuff for the kids, we have to accept that reality, that's a fact, that kids are going without guidance counselors and things like this, and they're the ones who are harmed. And last thing, I did write an editorial with Rancho, and I would invite anybody to read it. I meant the things that I wrote. And Ms. Reyes Morton, you wrote a retort which factually are pretty shaky, but I'm more than willing to sit down and talk to you, and I definitely want to talk to your husband as well regarding some comments he made about me as well. So hopefully, we can do that.
Next speaker, Brian Morton.
I live at 113 State Street, Camden, New Jersey. I have three children in the Camden City School District. I noticed that you put these rules at the podium, but no one ever really abides by them. And I also noticed that throughout the months, most of the people that come to this podium are not parents, are not really vested in half the things that they say or demand, because they really don't have an interest. You know, their children's education aren't the ones on the line. You know, most of them are paid, most of them, I'm not sure what Angel was up to tonight, you know, come to really make a show throughout the month, and then they leave out. When I leave out, I go home, I read to my daughters, you know, when I wake up in the morning, I go to work, and I engage parents across the district, most of them that are terrified to come to this board meeting, because they know most of the people that come to this meeting and come to this podium, half of them aren't Camden residents, the vast majority of them are not parents. So my comments tonight are simply to implore you, Superintendent, to, I'm the executive director of Parents for Great Camden Schools, and when we say that, we mean all schools. We want to see all schools rise, we want to see all Camden children succeed. And throughout the month, we've held coffee clutches that have had over 150 parents attend. They won't come here, but they'll come to our meetings, they'll share their issues, they'll share their complaints, they'll share their aspirations, they'll share their dreams. But they don't feel safe here, because the very rules that are put in place are never held as sanctified. That buzzer goes off, and people go on for another 15 minutes. So I just want to reach out and implore you, Superintendent, members of the board, to attend one of our house parties, one of our coffee clutches, one of our events. All of the people that are members of Parents for Great Camden Schools are parents with students inside the district, and every day, Monday through Friday, and sometimes Saturday, they're out knocking on doors, they're out talking to parents, they're holding house parties, they're holding meetings, they're holding trainings. They're doing many things that are replicated inside the district but have very low turnout, and they do it to a high success and to a high degree. In our first year, we knocked on over 35,000 doors, we had over 5,000 people sign up. And in the last six months, we've engaged another 10,000 households. We are serious and committed to making sure that parents feel comfortable and confident with their voice, and there are no shows here, there is nothing of pretense here. Our dream is to get parents comfortable and competent and confident with expressing their needs and their dreams in the Camden City School District. So I invite each and every one of you to attend one of our events. We'll be having several back-to-school events starting at the end of July, and I'll be back personally to extend that invitation.
Next speaker, Rancho Dickerson. After that is Marie Sheard.
Good evening, Rancho Dickerson, Camden residents, Parkside community.
Good evening.
Good evening. So I wanted to ask a question, Superintendent, when you made your report, you said that meeting for the bidding for Camden High is at Wood School? H.P. Wilson, was it? At what time?
10:00 AM.
10:00 AM, okay. I want to make sure I had it down. And then my question is, when, if this goes through with Camden High, where does the equipment from the closing schools go? Is there like a community auction where the community, all of the people who are involved in the community can get involved and maybe get some of that equipment and using it for nonprofit organizations as a, you know, a tax write-off or whatever? Because I've heard more than enough people come to me and ask about the equipment, especially from Camden High. A lot of the shops that are closing down have great equipment, and people want to know, since it's not going to be another, some of the things are not following to other schools, we want to know where's that equipment going? So if there will be a community auction that's open to the public, that we can come in and kind of put our bid on things that we need for the community. The second thing is the marketing for public schools. I've been at this podium for the past three years asking for the same thing, here we are in the summertime, and I'm wondering, can we get marketing for public schools? I'm seeing a lot of marketing going on for the charters, they're making great statements about what they're doing and all that kind of stuff, and people are here raving about how great the charters are doing, public are doing just as well, and it's in-house. A lot of the principals are raving about their great accolades and their data and their information, but it's not becoming public and putting it on a district highlight is not enough. We need to see, we need to see signs and signage and conversations outside in the community, so people can know that Camden Public Schools are doing well, too. All right. The next thing I want to talk about is effective leadership in the schools. I saw the list of all the principals that are changing over. I want to ask a question. Nicole Harrigan, she's a great educator also, leader, is she going to be only K, it said elementary of H.P. Wilson, is it only elementary or is it K through eighth? Because I saw it said elementary up there. I want to make sure that she's going to be the K through eighth, I don't know if it's going to be two principals there, because it said on the screen, elementary for her principal, her being the principal at the school. So I don't know if that's a typo on your end, but I wanted to be sure if it's going to be two principals there, or it's just going to be her as the lead principal at the school. And then I want to make sure that we have effective leadership and it being supported throughout the school year. I know we start with a lot of vacancies and crater holes inside the district, and I've been saying that for some time now, just want to make sure that we are investing in good leadership, supporting these school leaders at the same time. And then the last thing I want to ask about is, can we look into a higher volume of cultural responsibility to teach about Juneteenth in the schools? We spend a lot of time making sure that Sing with the Mayo is a part of the curriculum, but we do not put Juneteenth in the curriculum, and this district was very quiet for Juneteenth, and it's a high volume of African-Americans in the city, and we need to see our culture displayed in a very positive way, too, and that is all of our cultural responsibility is to let Black children see Black things happen in the Black community. So I'm asking, I'm asking the district to make Juneteenth equivalent as we do Sing with the Mayo, and the push we give for the San Juan Baptista Parade, the support we give them as supporters, give the same thing to the Juneteenth celebration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dickerson.
Next speaker, Marie Sheard. Next speaker, Marie Sheard. Okay. Next speaker is Carolyn Wade. And after that is Kelly Francis.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm Carolyn Wade. I'm president of CWA Local 1040. We represent the janitorial staff. I know you've heard that it takes a village to raise a child. And what you have heard here tonight is from your village. Every part of the village has their purpose, and they are an intricate part of the village. The part of the village that I speak for is asking for some stability in their lives. No one can live their lives comfortably if they don't know if they have a job. We're asking for job security, you know, not money. And here we are, a part of that village, and we give to the children that we encounter every day. You know, teachers have their purpose, but the first person that a student sees in the morning is usually that janitor. That janitor has wiped many tears. We are part of that village. Everybody served their part. And we're hoping that this evening, that you're listening with your ears, but when you get ready to make a decision, make a decision with your heart. Because this is what it takes to educate a child, to raise a child up. And the reason that we say that is because we are a local that operates in the prisons, in the psychiatric hospitals. And the people that we encounter, some of the children that we encounter are children that have been failed by their schools, by their community, by their village. You know, you've heard from the village. Some of them have been complimentary, some have saying, "We ain't there yet." And we're saying to you, in regards to the custodians, "We are not there yet because we deserve job security." We're requesting that. We're saying, "Listen to us." But we're also asking you to listen with your heart. Because our people deserve to know that they have a job from year to year. Or our people deserve to know that once they put 15, 16 years in the district, and then you say to them, "We need you no longer." And we are at an age where we can't just go out and get another job, but we have given you the best years of our life. We ask you to listen with your ears, but make the decision with your heart. Thank you.
Thank you. Come to the stage.
Kelly Francis. After that is Sean Brown.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Board members, staff. I was reading the other day an article in the New Jersey Advanced Media in which they interviewed you, Paymon Rahalipar. And I'm going to read a quote from you in that article. It says that, quote, talking about Camden High School, "The history of that building, it's profound, and I care a lot about it." Camden Superintendent Paymon Rahalipar said in an interview on Monday, close quote, quote, "We simply can't put adult nostalgia over the needs of children," in close quote. Now, I was very insulted.
Excuse me. Could you repeat that again?
Angered.
Mr. Kelly.
By that comment.
Could you repeat the quote, please?
Repeat the quote? Okay, quote, "The history of that building, it's profound, and I care a lot about it," end quote. Camden Superintendent Paymon Rahalipar said in an interview on Monday, quote, "We simply can't put adult nostalgia over the needs of children," end quote. Now, what authorizes you to speak for me or any other adult citizen of the city of Camden? I don't, that to me is the ultimate audacity, that you would even try to speak for us. You have no idea of who the people of Camden are or how we feel. It is not nostalgia. That building is our history. I can't speak for the other minorities in the city, but I can speak for the African-American community because I've been a part of it for 68 years. And it is our history. Our history has never been included in American history. That's why they decided to give us a Black History Month, because they know they have omitted us from American history. But we are a part of American history. And that building, Camden High School, is a part of our history, the same as the buildings in your native country of Iran are part of your history. You can go back to Iran and you can look at buildings where your ancestors traversed, where they were educated, where they worked. And we want that same privilege as African-Americans, that we, our children and our descendants can be able to see their history just like you can see your history. And just like the Cooper family can come in and see Pomona Hall, part of the Cooper family, it's been there for 300 years. They're preserving that. They're preserving the Johnson family history, RCA, the man who founded RCA, the Victor Building, and several of his buildings. They're preserving those. Those families can come in and see what their ancestors did. All the bank buildings in Camden, all the bankers who founded those banks, their children can come into Camden and still see the structures that were part of their history, their ancestors. No, it's not nostalgia, and that's an insult. It's history. It's our history. Those same people who graduated Camden High School are the ones who fought in every war in the history of this country and preserved the freedoms that you were able to come here and enjoy. Your family were able to come here and enjoy the freedoms that those graduates fought for and died for. You had to leave your country because you did not enjoy those freedoms in your native country. And also, after they fought and died in the wars to preserve the freedoms that all the immigrants from the Middle East, from South America, from all over the world can come into this country and enjoy the freedoms that those graduates of Camden High School fought and died for. They fought in every war. And also, after fighting in the war, they fought in the civil rights movement.
Please wrap up your comments.
And I happen to be one of those who fought in the civil rights movement.
Please wrap up your comments, Mr. Francis.
And enabled you to become here as a first-class citizen. If it hadn't not been for the civil rights movement, Brown v. Board, Civil Rights Act, the Voting Rights Act, the Fair Housing Act, you would have been a second-class citizen the same as the black people were for 350 years. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Francis.
So for you to say that, you to speak for me and say that it's nostalgia that I want to preserve that building, no, no, you can't speak for me. No. And I don't know any of my peers or my contemporaries or my ancestors. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Francis.
So those folks have been some of the greatest people ever who have graduated from Camden High School. They have been doctors, lawyers, corporate presidents, judges, you name it, artists, musicians, some of the greatest people in this planet have come through Camden High School, and they are part of our history. Okay? That's history that you want to demolish. And you're fortunate in Iran that ISIS hasn't gotten to your country yet.
Mr. Francis, your time is up.
They've destroyed the history of Syria, the history of Iraq, and other Asian countries.
Sir, that's enough.
Is your great point? Oh, you don't want to hear anymore? Okay. Have you heard enough?
Thank you, Mr. Francis.
You've gone over your time.
You heard enough? Okay?
We've let you go well over your time.
Okay, all right.
Next speaker is Sean Brown.
I think I have made the point, and I can understand why you don't want to hear anymore.
Thank you, Mr. Francis.
Good evening, everyone. Sean Brown.
Good evening.
I want to share a few things with you. First, I'm just curious to hear, and I love the haircut, actually. I'm just curious to where the business administrator is and what's up with the process of hiring a business administrator. I saw in the resolutions that there was a board secretary appointed, but then that board secretary is not actually sitting at the meeting. I am saying this, my former school board member had on, because I just know the extreme value of that eighth floor and what that office does and what it contributes to what happens. And I think there's a few discrepancies I see in this board report that could be reflective of an absence of leadership in that department. So getting into that, as I've told you before, I've had a few interns that have worked with me that have been graduates of the Camden School District within the last seven years. And every month, at least, before I come to these meetings, after I leave these meetings, I talk to them a lot about what their thoughts are on the school district itself and public education in general. And a common theme that I hear is that when they graduate, including valedictorians, number one in our class, they feel ill-prepared for college. I wrote a whole graduate thesis on college completion for adults, and the reality is that people also graduate from college feeling ill-prepared for the workforce. So as I've said, we can talk all night and day about the debate of trust with the SDA and the governor and the Paymon and the mayor when it comes to something as the demolition of Camden High. And I think it's a legitimate thing because there's a long history of mistrust that has happened over time, and I can understand where people's concerns come from. But when you have people that are paid, one of them just talked on this podium a few people ago, that are paid through their jobs to be advocates for children, I want to hear, I have a couple of questions I would love to have answered, not necessarily tonight, not even when you respond, Paymon. But when Camden High is rebuilt, what does a true STEM or STEAM, science, technology, engineering, arts, and math, what does that look like? What does that mean for space, for outlets in the classroom? What are the relationships that we're now building with Haltech and Subaru and other companies to make sure that young people have internships during the summer? It's great that the school district hires people, but what about these companies and what are they providing for our young people? Mr. Dietz, my son's kindergarten teacher at ECDC, told me at the end of the third marking period that my son is reading on a fourth grade level. It would be hard to believe that if it wasn't for the fact that my son reads my emails out loud to me and my text messages that he pop up on my phone, which isn't necessarily a good thing all the time, if I may. My son reading on a fourth grade level is reflective of Mr. Dietz as a great teacher, Ms. Dobson and the leadership of ECDC, good and positive things that the school district has done, including what this advisory board has consulted with the superintendent on. But it's also reflective of who Keisha is as a mother and who I am as a father and what we do in our own household and the culture of learning that we have in our community of friends, which is something that needs to be spread. Ms. Hinson, Ebony Hinson, to be clear, has done a great job of looking at parental engagement, what the district is doing, and having those conversations at a much higher and deeper level than we've ever had in this district before. I sat on the parent advisory council and got to see these presentations and see how they spent a really long time of dealing with the same topic from month to month. During the summer, they're hiring people that are going to help implement these things. September parental engagement is going to look even better than what it's had in the last few years. We're figuring out how to have difficult conversation with parents who aren't doing a great job and making sure that their children are learning what it is that they need to, what they need to know.
Please wrap up your comments, Mr. Brown.
Sure. So I just want to just bring your attention to something. On this board report on page 33, I don't, I can't exaggerate the impact of this or how this happened, but what I'm looking at is kind of hard to think is true. So what you see on 33 is the purchase of textbooks, and this is something that we've dealt, that the board has dealt with for a long time because it has to approve the purchase. For one thing, it appears as though we're continuing to buy a completely new set of textbooks for students every year, which doesn't really seem to make a lot of sense. It doesn't seem to be cost-effective. Secondly, and to Rancha's point earlier, I just want to be clear, as you see on here, that we do teach African-American history that does include a lesson on Juneteenth. I coincidentally sat in at MedEast when that lesson was being taught last academic year, so I do know that it happens. And we do have the Amistad Commission, which requires African-American history be taught K through 12.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
But if you look a little bit, if you look a little bit lower here for purchase of that, if you look a bit lower, it looks like we're buying, oh, senior seminar textbooks. We're buying, it says grades nine to 12. Well, seniors are only in 12th grade, right? Like, you're not a senior ninth through 11th grade, which means that if it's not the person that submitted it, then the business administrator or someone at that office has to make sure that we're spending money in a way that's appropriate for the right things and a right amount for the right people that is delivered in the right way so people get it before the school year. But not only that, that once they get it, it is parallel and consistent with the curriculum and instruction and the other mandates that teachers have. So just some food for thought. Thank you so much. I'd love to talk to you about this one-on-one.
Next speaker is Sherrell Sharp. Does Sherrell Sharp come back? How about Michaela Paybon? Okay, that ends public comment.
All right. There were only a handful of specific questions that were raised, so I'll just quickly respond to them. The first two were actually raised by a couple of people, not during public comment, but as I was walking up, they pulled me aside. The first question is, why do non-renewed security officers receive summer employment over permanent officers? And the second is, why can't non-renewed clerks work over the summer instead of temps? So on the first question, we do prioritize non-renewed staff for employment opportunities to help through their transition over those who have been renewed, and I think that is a fair and equitable policy, all things considered. Secondly, as it relates to the non-renewed clerks, and I can, happy to take this question offline, but we're actually not planning on using temps this summer. So just, you know, the question itself, we're not currently contemplating using temps. Couple of other questions that were raised during public comment, so questions about Camden High School around the equipment and the transition itself. So the plan right now is to utilize all of the equipment. And so the idea of an auction is an interesting one because to the extent there is excess equipment, currently, we are thinking to put it into storage. Happy to pursue the auction idea. But again, the focus will be to utilize as much of the equipment as possible. So let's say it is a CGE class, a classroom with CTE resources that wouldn't be used in the new building because that particular class may not be offered. We can move it to Woodrow Wilson High School. That could be one possible use of those resources and textbooks and other equipment. And so again, we're going to try and utilize as much of that equipment as possible, open to the idea of an auction. There was a specific question about Ms. Harrigan Nash and her placement at H.B. Wilson. Apologies if that slide wasn't clear. H.B. Wilson being a K to eight school, she will be the principal of the entire school, not just the elementary portion of it, but she'll be the principal of the entire school. And then lastly, to the questions Mr. Brown had raised, so first thing I'll say on the SBA, so we are currently and still in a search for the SBA and board secretary position, and we're going to utilize other business office personnel appropriately if the vacancy isn't filled by July the first. Secondly, on the questions around Camden High School and programs, Jay Wa on our team, who works with Anna Sharak, is taking the lead on a lot of the partnerships and the programs that we're aiming to build at the four academies. And so, Mr. Brown, if you have any specific questions, Jay's got a ton of information he can share with you. And then lastly, on the textbooks, so the, you know, one quick comment is, we don't currently offer these courses, and we're going to be offering them next year, and that's why we've ordered the textbooks. Open it up to any other questions board members may have.
Minister Wasey.
Thank you very much, Madam President and Superintendent. I just want to take the moment to say, I've got several things to say. I want to first thank former councilman Ali Salone L. and councilman of the Second Ward, Brian Coleman, and also Parents for Great Schools, Mr. Brian Morton, for putting on a wonderful event this past Saturday at the Camden High School alumni, along with the Camden High School alumni associate as well, Ms. Carmen Lazada, for the great turnout and celebrating. and celebration it was, and the atmosphere of the old Camden City spirit that we grew up in Camden in. For that wonderful event, I just want to acknowledge them, and thank the school district, as well as the mayor's office, and all of those who supported that wonderful event. Also, the issue with Camden High School, and then I always, well, it don't matter whether I get in trouble or not, because I must speak the truth, and as we respectfully talk about Camden High School, and what it means to all of us, and I know it's very sentimental to a lot of us, and because the project is going through, if you attend most of the meetings and the updates that the district do, have been, continue to do, I mean, doing today, which was last week, you'll see that. But I just wanted to humbly say to the community, a lot of times when we debate, particularly African-American, that you say African-American issues, but black issues, we like to do it behind closed door, but when we do things in the public, I feel a need to speak out against it, because I've been trained and taught that we should keep our issues behind closed doors, argue about it, and come out as one front. That has always been my mantra. But I want to say that Camden High School was originally built in Parkside at a time where African-Americans weren't allowed in Parkside, so let's just remember that. I too am sentimental, and went through the, walked through the great halls, had the opportunity to walk through those halls of Camden High School, and we seen the demographics and the nationality of Camden High change over the years, but I just want us to remember that, because, and I, I don't ever want to discard those of us who are elders, who definitely have paid the way for us, who have been on this planet longer than us and seen a lot more than what we have. But if you look back on the issue, from what I stand, and I'm speaking as Brother Minister Waseem Muhammad, that a lot of times in the community, we get into forcing others, because if you look at historically, the civil rights movement, there was another group of, I wouldn't say civil rights movement, there was another movement who was stressing to us in our community to do things for ourselves, and then we can shape our own history and legacy as we go. But when we're asking someone to do something for us that we ourselves have not been able and have not tried to do for ourselves, that we should, you know, I mean, just consider that. And I want to give that to the generation, and have people hear me, for the generations that's moving on, because we don't want to continue to make some of the same mistakes that we have made in the fut, in the past, in the future. So I encourage, as always, our community to continue to get involved actively in our community, but there's another portion in our community that, that urges us that if someone is not going to do something for us, then we should get up and do it for ourselves. I just wanted to say that humbly and respectfully to everyone listening, and all those who are sentimentally involved with the Camden High School project, and that's why I say it humbly and sincerely.
Thank you, Minister Waseem. Any other board members?
I just wanted to say a few words regarding, there was a couple, several different things today. The Donaldson hearings, you know, there was concerns about, you know, you know, actions done by superintendent, you know, we have a process, Donaldson hearings. It's important that people in the community become involved in these processes and, you know, follow up with your board members and communicate with them, so that we get to know a little bit of your world, so that we know how to advocate for it appropriately when the time comes. And so, you know, I implore you to continue, you know, being involved in those processes, because only through your involvement, and through changes in policies, laws and regulations, and things of that sort, is where the real progress and success, you know, come. So, you know, that's pretty much what I just wanted to say for today.
Thank you, Ms. Morton. Ms. Burley? Any comments?
No, not right now.
Thank you. I also would like to say, in reference to Camden High School, I am an alumni as well. But if you walk through that building, and you have any kind of allergies, or sinus, or asthma, it's going to trigger your children. And we also know that health and wellness is a major piece that we have to be mindful of with our children, no matter where they are, no matter what school they're in. We cannot educate them properly in that building, because they cannot get the internet services and the type of biology labs and science labs that they need. So we've opened that door up for the community to do the walkthroughs. So had you done walkthroughs through that building, you would have seen, not just in the main building, but throughout other parts of that building, there are concerns for health reasons for our children. So most importantly, what we have to make sure that we do, is that we begin to continue to work together. That's, that's the beginning. There were three committees that was opened up to begin the planning of this process. The doors have now opened for another layer for the community and parents to be a part of. You're not going to be excluded. Some of you may be feeling that way, because you weren't at the door in the beginning, but the doors will be open for you to be a part of that. I have heard some issues and concerns, I will take it back to the committee, I've heard it from the community. So if you don't come to the meetings, then it's our responsibility to carry it for you. But, but is more important, as Minister Waseem said, is that if we begin to speak out in uniformity, then we get more things done. That's the only way we're going to be able to conquer those things that come before us. We may not agree on everything all the time, but we must come out unified on behalf of our children, because that's the reason that we're all sitting here today, where it should be. So with that, I'm going to say, if all hearts and minds are clear, I will ask for a motion for us to go into closed session.
Yeah, so we, the board will enter into closed session to discuss matters of real estate, labor negotiations, personnel, and attorney-client privilege. So can I get that motion to go into closed session?
Motion to go into closed by Rayes Morton.
Second. Motion to go into closed made by Felicia Rayes Morton, seconded by Ms. Dorothy Burley. All in favor of going into closed session, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. So it is now 7:04. The board's going into closed session, we will be out at 7:25 PM. Motion to come out of closed session?
Motion to come out of closed.
Second.
Motion to come out of closed session made by Waseem Muhammad, seconded by Dorothy Burley. All in favor of coming out of closed session, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. I rally closed session. Can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn the meeting made by Waseem Muhammad, seconded by Martha Wilson. Roll call. Dorothy Burley?
Yes.
Taysha Manir?
Yes.
Waseem Muhammad?
Yes.
Felicia Rayes Morton?
Yes.
Martha Wilson?
Yes.
All right, the time is now 7:48 PM, and we are now adjourned.